Call the order of the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for May 19, 2015. Please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call a roll, Misty, please.
Councilmember Fritsch did inform me that she would be absent from tonight's meeting.
Very well.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grundon?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scher?
Here.
Item three correction and/or approval of the City Council minutes for May 5, 2015. Do we have a motion of approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Correspondence, start with you, Steve.
I'm quiet week. I got nothing.
Ed?
Quiet, nothing here.
Same, same for me. Quiet, nothing.
I, I had the same, so we had a lot of quiet and nothing. Item five, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is subject of a public hearing. State's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out and sign in the sheet on the provided on the podium. Any... See, no one will go ahead and close. City managers' report.
I know everybody's dying to know this. The dam is still being reviewed by the DNR. Hasn't been finalized. Soon as they kick it out, we'll get it out for bid.
How's that for schedule? Are they, are they behind?
Yes. We would have liked to have had it out mid-April.
Okay.
I'm going to Prairie DuChene for the first impressions Thursday night. You going, Ed?
Not sure yet. There may be a conflict.
Okay. Well, anyways, I'll be there for their, to do the presentation over there. It'll be 5:30 till whenever we're done to the city council over there. I contacted Senator Fitzgerald's office and sent them all the information. They're currently gathering information from DOT and will be getting back to us. You're all invited to the Public Works Board meeting of June 9th, which is a tour of Public Works projects. And a reminder that I'll be gone from May 29th to June 8th to a training program in Charlottesville, Virginia. So I'll miss the June 2nd meeting, so it'll all be Betsy. It's all finance anyways. You'll just have the insurance quotes, which didn't get done tonight, and all the new debt. So those will be the two big items on there. Other than that, I'm done. I did hand out some documents tonight. One of them is a memo on American Way, some financial reports, and a request from some group for a resolution from the city.
Um, just, I just noticed on, on the other side of the commons by the restaurant on the corner, they're, they took out part of the sidewalk and put in sod. But who did that? Across from the gas station?
Over by El Mariachi's?
Yeah.
I do not know.
Okay, 'cause they went all the way around the corner. I was just wondering.
Was it behind the sidewalk or in front of the sidewalk?
The front part of the sidewalk next to the curb.
I do not know.
I mean, it looks nice, uh, uh, 'cause, but I didn't, I had, I hadn't heard anything on it.
I hadn't either.
Okay. Maybe you could check it out when you get there.
Yeah, well, it was like the barrels, you know? I came and said, "Paul, why the heck you got those barrels all over the place?" He says, "I was gonna ask you the same question." So we hunted down Pat and said, "Why are all the barrels there?" And he goes, "I thought they were yours."
Oh, on Main Street there by the restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, ended up being that the gas company had done some work at Lakers over the winter, and they hired this company to come in and fix the curb and sidewalk and asphalt. And they just came in and threw up the barrels and started working. Didn't tell anybody.
And then, and then they got the work done and they left the barrels there for two days.
Yes, sir.
Great plan. Okay, moving onward. Acceptance of committee minutes. I have before me the Joint Rock Lake Committee minutes of April 7, 2015. And I'll have those on record as read. For council business, first, uh, topical business is, uh, board committee and appointments. We have Sandra Whistler. Am I saying that right? Whistler? For the, um, for the library board and do I get a... Uh, who's, now do you assign that one?
No, that's yours.
Okay, well.
Motion to confirm it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank Sandra for her willingness to volunteer for that position. And we have a few appointments for the, um, boards, appointments for the council members. Diane Fritsch to the Economic Development Board, Ed Grundon to the Library Board, Steve to the Parks Board, Mike to the Planning Commission, and Rudy to the Public Works Board. Do we have a motion of confirmation?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
So we'll stay on our same, our boards. We have a tavern operator's license request for...
Mr. Scher?
Yeah.
You wanna vote on that motion in a second?
Why don't we do that? Misty, don't let me do that.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Way to, way to go. Keep Vicky on her toes there, so we know she's awake.
That was a test.
Nice planning.
We knew all this.
Planned it ahead of time.
Okay, so we have a, a request for a tavern operator's license for... Help me out, Misty.
Carrie Anne Marie Pavlock.
Pavlock, okay. Uh, do we have a motion of appointment?
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Call a roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Insurance quotes are put on hold. That'll be on...
June 2nd.
Next, which one is it?
The June 2nd.
June 2nd meeting, okay. Forward to that, see if everybody, our insurance goes up too. And, uh...
Yeah, we're working on it.
The one quote we had from the insurance company was, um...
Are you talking about the property?
Yep.
Yeah.
Went from forty to seventy.
Yes. That has to do with the, uh, in the, the state budget. They're looking at taking away the local government property insurance fund. But I could have still renewed for this upcoming year, and their underwriters advised that they have an increase, which was substantial, obviously, to go. We, we're looking at a fifty-eight percent increase in our property insurance coverage, so I'm working on alternatives. And that's all tied into our other coverages, so I really wanted to wait until that was all a little more clear. And then I'll have to bring a resolution to you if I am able to get better coverage. I need a resolution to withdraw from the local government property insurance, so we will see what happens.
Okay.
Hope I can do better than seventy thousand.
Fifty-eight percent?
Yeah, it was fifty-eight percent.
Perfect.
Another example of big government making our life easier.
Yes, that is awesome.
I'd just figure out how to cram that under the levy limit.
Okay, item... Item D is a discussion and decision on a bid award contract for the bio solid hauling at the wastewater treatment plant. This is, uh, motion fifteen dash five dash two dash one. Misty, would you read that?
City Council motion fifteen dash five dash two dash one, accepting the bid from Veolia for bio solids removal, hauling, storage, and disposal services. Whereas, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to the authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes has established certain standards and procedures for the management of wastewater and sanitary sewer utility. And whereas, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills is responsible for the management and operation of the city-owned electric distribution, water treatment, water distribution, wastewater treatment, water pollution control, and wastewater collection systems. And whereas, the Public Works Department has requested proposals for sludge removal, hauling, and land application of municipal sludge from the Lake Mills wastewater plant from qualified contractors, and has forwarded the lowest possible proposal to the City Council for its review and decision regarding said proposal. Be it therefore moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the low bid for sludge removal, hauling, storage, and land application of municipal sludge services from the Lake Mills wastewater plant is consistent with the contract LM four dash fifteen, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof. Section two, that the bid from Veolia ES Industrial Service, Inc., Veolia North America, a private contractor located at 1203 Clement Street, Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin, 53538, of point zero three three cents per gallon for hauling and field injection on city-provided sites, point zero three four cents per gallon for hauling and field injection on contractor-provider sites, and point twelve cents, twelve cents per gallon for contractor-provided storage and disposal of municipal sludge from the Lake Mills wastewater plant, copies of which are attached hereto and are made a part hereof, are hereby accepted. Section three, that the city manager is authorized to execute contract LM four dash fifteen, and to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said agreement. Section four, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to Veolia ES Industrial Service, Inc., Veolia North America, 1203 Clement Street, Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin, 53538. The City Council does hereby accept the bid and authorize the contract to be signed by the city manager, and does hereby authorize the council president to sign the motion.
We have a motion of acceptance of motion fifteen dash five dash two dash one.
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Steve, is this the, uh, is this the same contractor that we've used in the past? This is a new one, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, we've used, over the last eight years, I think we've used four different ones. They tend to come and go.
Okay.
This is probably the most stable contractor we've used in a while. Normally you get, you know, a farm operation or some type of operation that kinda starts up and then moves on. And, but this is, um, Veolia. They're a pretty solid group.
How's the, um, the contract part, price as opposed to last year?
Um, it's slightly higher than what the contract bid was, uh, but it's not much. And the contractor who bid that low price wasn't really able to perform at the standards expected.
Comments or questions?
No, last year that was like a farm operation, wasn't it? Wasn't it, Walter?
Yep.
Okay.
Ed, you have anything?
No.
Right. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Resolution fifteen dash twenty-two. This is county highway aid. This is a yearly thing. Uh, Misty, if you would.
Resolution fifteen dash twenty-two, petition for county highway aid. The City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, hereby petitions the Board of Supervisors of the County of Jefferson as follows. One, that heretofore to wit on the nineteenth day of May, 2015, at a lawful meeting of the governing body of said municipality, a resolution was duly adapted to appropriate funds for the improvement of highways in said municipality at a cost estimated as follows. Local municipality share, three thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars to be paid by June 30. County of Jefferson share, three thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars to be applied to account in April. Total improvement costs, six thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars. Two, that the County of Jefferson share of the appropriation does not exceed the maximum of one hundred dollars per mile of local roads in said municipality. Three, that said municipality is willing to abide by the rules set forth in resolution number 2005 dash O2 adopted April 19, 2005, and offer the Jefferson County Highway Department a right of first refusal for the work. According to the resolution, City of Lake Mills takes the position of either will participate in county road aid this year or does not wish to participate in county road aid this year. Wherefore, said municipality requests that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Jefferson grant this petition for county highway aid in a sum of three thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars in accordance with the provisions of section eighty-three point one four and section eighty-three point zero three sub one of the Wisconsin statutes and in accordance with the resolutions of said Board of Supervisors heretofore adopted.
And we hear a motion of adoption with a, uh... One of the options?
Move to accept resolution fifteen twenty-two and will participate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So this, looks like it's the same, yeah, same exact thing as last year then.
Been the same exact thing for fifteen years, you know, and always the question, well, you know, the change, the, there's been so much change in what you can use the county highway department to do for you as far as work, but, uh, with oil and, the oil and chip and the patch, six thousand dollars doesn't go very far, and so it's a pretty good deal for us. We at least double our money and are able to get a little bit more roadwork done.
Okay, anything else? Call the vote.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Ordinance eleven forty-six restricting parking on Oaks, Oak Street and in front of the post office. This is the third reading. Uh, Misty, if you would.
Ordinance eleven forty-six, amending parking regulations, Oak Street. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section three, I'm sorry, section six dash three dash one, parking time limitations of Title VI, Chapter III of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. A, fifteen-minute parking, East Oak Street, from a point that is fifty-four feet west of the intersection with Mulberry Street to a point no closer than four feet from the driveway exiting the US Post Office, north side. Section two, section six dash three dash two, no parking zones of Title VI, Chapter III of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is hereby amended by adding the following. Oak Street, east, from the intersection with Mulberry Street to a point that is fifty-four feet west of Mulberry Street, north side. Section three, this ordinance is sponsored by Council Representative Ed Grundon. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication.
Do we have a motion of acceptance of...
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing I got was that the actual ordinance reads section four and then jumps to six in the physical, just a little...
Yeah, Misty caught that.
Okay.
Okay. And so we'll, uh, call the roll with that pen and ink.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
This is, um, ordinance eleven forty-seven, amending the Lake Mills Elementary School parking zones and no parking areas. This is the third reading. Misty, if you would.
Ordinance eleven forty-seven, amending Lake Mills Elementary School parking zones and no parking areas. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section six dash three dash two dash one, school parking zones of Title VI, Chapter III of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by creating the following as an area where no person may stop or leave standing any vehicle, whether attended or unattended, or whether temporarily or otherwise. Prospect Street, east, on the south side from the intersection of Main and Prospect Street to the intersection of Birch and Prospect Street, between the hours of seven thirty AM and eight thirty AM, and between the hours of two thirty PM to three thirty PM on any days during which Lake Mills Elementary School is in session. Section two, section six dash three dash two, no parking zones of Title VI, Chapter III of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by adding the following. Birch Street, from a point that is fifty-eight feet north of the center of the intersection with Birch Court to a point that is ninety-three feet south from the center of the intersection with Birch Court, east side. Birch Street, from the intersection with Pine Street to the intersection with Prospect Street, west side. Main Street, from a point that is eighty-four feet south of the intersection with Pine Street to the intersection with Pine Street, east side. Pine Street, from the intersection with Main Street to a point that is three hundred sixty-nine feet east of Main Street, south side. Section three, this ordinance is sponsored by Council Representative Diane Hasp Fritsch. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
And we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Um, so this basically just takes the parking area from the old and then reassigns it, or am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, it, it does a number of things. Um, it establishes the, um, the specific areas where they have to put the signage for school crossing areas, as well as fixing different items of no parking that before the school was flipped to the other side on Pine Street, never was even contemplated, but now with it being all reconfigured, the principal and the fire, or the police chief and the Public Works Director all work together on this as their plan for how they want the signage to be put in place before school starts in the fall.
Great. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scher?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Uh, ordinance eleven forty-eight, um, this is a request to amend zoning. Why don't you go ahead and...
Ordinance eleven forty-eight, amending section ten dash three dash two dash A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel two four six zero seven one three, one three one two zero two zero, five ten Owen Street. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section ten dash three dash two dash A, the official zoning ordinance and map of the City of Lake Mills are hereby amended to zone the following described property from I-1 General Industrial to R-3 dash twelve multifamily residential as de...
Okay, and...
Depicted in the attached map to wit parcel two four six zero seven one three, one three one two zero two zero, five ten Owen Street. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Okay, this, um, do we hear a motion of, nope, I don't need that yet.
That's first reading.
First reading. So this is basically taking the, um, the, um, daycare center on Owens and then changing it into, uh, adult living, senior living? Okay, any comments or questions on that?
Now, the big thing to note was this is, this land use is part of what's in the adopted comprehensive plan, so that was some of the things that we went into when we talked about this in the planning commission, so...
Okay, um, so eleven forty-eight, we'll go on to the second reading. Ordinance eleven forty-nine, uh, request to amend zoning from General Industrial to Planned Industrial. Misty?
Ordinance eleven forty-nine, amending section ten dash three dash two dash A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel two four six zero seven one three, one three one three dash zero two zero, three zero five, South CP Avenue. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section ten dash three dash two dash A, the official zoning ordinance and map of the City of Lake Mills are hereby amended to zone the following described property from I-1 General Industrial to PI Plan Industrial as depicted in the attached map to wit parcel two four six zero seven one three, one three one three zero two zero, three zero five, South CP Avenue. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Okay, and this is, Steve, you gotta help me out on this one. I, I cannot picture where that, where they wanna put that building on that map.
The building is already built.
Oh, that's the yellow building?
Um...
I thought they're gonna put another one up.
They eventually will probably put another one.
Okay.
But, um, this is the existing Chapter Two building next, um, and I think that the, the building actually went here and there'll be another one, um, built on here eventually. So they, this picture, they've already added one on and they'll do another one. So they, they bought this parcel and then they bought the old canning factory over here. And they re, they did a CSM on that last fall. And then, uh, part of that CSM was that they had to come back and either zone it one way or the other, and they opted to go with PI rather than G, uh, General Industrial. Um, and so basically what they're just doing is getting this last piece of this parcel consistent with the front half, so it's all one zoning for the Chapter Two use.
Makes sense, Mike.
Yeah, and it, uh, it, we talked about it a little bit also, but it fits right in with the comprehensive plan and what, uh, what's planned for future.
Anything else on that? If not, that, uh, eleven forty-nine, we'll move on to the second reading. Recommendations for future agendas?
Did you wanna talk about budget at some point? Not necessarily agenda item, but did we need to do that?
That would be a separate meeting, yeah, study session sometime in the next couple of months. We've been working pretty hard on it and going over all the issues, but, you know, we're gonna have to debate if we do CP Avenue, are we gonna add that on top of what we're already doing? Are we gonna take out something? And there are several other topics that probably need to be discussed as far as, um, how we're gonna proceed with, with, um, projects over the next several years, particularly leading up to 2018. We also have, you know, several offers on property that'll probably be coming through that'll affect how we're gonna do things over the next several months. And, uh, like I said, we have insurance issues and how that falls in and where that goes. It'll be an interesting year to see what we get done.
We got some big projects that are coming up, including the dam project, the, um, the, um, South Main Street, um, possibly the CP Avenue, maybe, I don't know. But after, after that's all said and done, do we have anything else that big that's laying in the bushes waiting for us?
Well, the dam project is this year, and it's pretty small.
Right.
Um, but then, next year we could have East Lake Park Place, which is, you know, six hundred thousand dollars, but we can special assess about three hundred thousand dollars of that. But then if we add on top of that CP Avenue, then you got... But then if we add on top of that CP Avenue, then you got somewhere between one and two million dollars. The next year we had Brewster in there, which is about a four hundred thousand dollar project. Then you jump to South Main Street, which is a six million dollar project. But from a general fund perspective, it's probably the smallest one of the group. It's about four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on what we add in. Then the next year it's Mulberry, which is a one-point-six million dollar project, uh, which the city probably has three hundred thousand. Three, four hundred thousand in it, so. I mean, we're at no point where we're short of projects. We could continue to do some pretty substantial projects over that period of time. In fact, that's that's what we're debating internally, you know, if you put CP Avenue on top of that somewhere, then it really changes the overall perspective of all the financing, all the other projects that are associated with it. Do you drop Brewster out?
I think Brew I keep hearing Brewster. What I thought we did Brewster.
No. It you know, I I have to laugh about it because Vern had a schedule of when all the public works projects were gonna be done. And and Brewster was supposed to be done in two thousand and two. Well, it's two thousand and fifteen and it's still not done.
Okay, that's why I keep hearing it.
Yeah, so it's been on the list for a long time. It's there there are a large number of projects that were, you know, scheduled. There have been projects that have been in the last ten done in the last ten years that were actually supposed to be done before Brewster. And some of them are done now, some of them are not. Uh, but, you know, we've had we've had changes in where we had to go and what we had to do and and, um, Brewster was one of those ones that was selected because it was part of the neighborhood that had been done, and the advantage of working in that neighborhood, which was East Lakeland Heights, was that, you didn't have to replace most of the water and sewer. So you could go in and just do the pavement, and then it didn't cost the wa the water and sewer utility any money, and they were able to catch up while the sewer was. The water hasn't been able to because of the drop in the impact fees, but Brewster has a pretty substantial water project on it.
Okay.
So that was one of the reasons why it kept sliding to the back and and, uh, it's still an issue.
Do we have a project to start talking about projects on the, uh, West Madison Street?
Well, the contract's been awarded, uh, the contracts are signed. The pre-con is scheduled. And they the contract, if you remember, had specific dates that they had to complete the project within. What specific dates they haven't given us yet, but it's it's like a five-day project, so sometime from from, what, June thirteenth to to August tenth, somewhere in there it'll get done.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, we are adjourned.